In some crime, and we've seen a decrease in other crimes. The federal government combines or collects crime data based on what they call the Uniform Crime Reporting System, and it's broken down into Part One and Part Two crimes. I don't mean to get too technical, but so that's what we base a lot of the information that we distribute on is this UCR, this Uniform Crime Reporting. Where do I point this to?
New battery.
Okay, so these are the Part One crimes, and these are the serious crimes that are reported: homicide, sexual battery, robbery, aggravated assault, stalking. And you can see that the majority of the crimes that we report to the federal government on a yearly basis are going down. And what you see here is what we had in July of 2016 as compared to June of 2016. In the yellow and the green, you see what we had year-to-date in 2016, and then that same period year-to-date in 2015. Like I said, as you can see, most of those numbers are going down, where we're seeing a huge increase, and not only in Southwest Ranches and in Davie, but throughout Broward County is auto thefts. You can see that it's a 233 percent increase year-to-date on auto thefts. May seem like a really huge number, but when you only have six for the year, and it jumps up to 20, you know, six isn't that big of a number, but this is a problem. We see it as a problem, and we're working to address it. We're working internally with our police department, but we're also working hand-in-hand with several of the federal agencies, because this isn't just a problem here in Davie or Southwest Ranches, but throughout South Florida. When you look at crime, and what this, we call this the Dunn Chart, Chief, Assistant Chief Dunn likes this, but we call it the Dunn Chart. But you see, over the last three years, generally, we're in the same ballpark of where we were last year at this time with numbers for Part One crimes. So what they do is they take all those Part One crimes that we saw at the beginning, they combine those numbers, and you can see that really in July, we're at the same place we were last year with the number of Part One crimes that we report. But going back to the auto thefts, this is a map of Southwest Ranches, and you can see where the majority of these thefts are occurring. Seems to be in that 43 zone. It's a long...
Is that a high-density area?
185th Way and 190th Ave, between 61st Manor and 63rd Street. So it's, I don't want to say it's a high-density area, because I don't think anywhere out here in Southwest Ranches is high-density, but that's where we're getting the majority of our crimes.
Compared to some.
Compared to some. Actually, higher density would probably be over towards the 34 zone. What you see is 34, because that's where you have the Publix Plaza and stuff like that. What we're seeing is going on is they're coming up 75 or 27, they're getting off, they're going into these neighborhoods, they're stealing these vehicles, and they're getting back on the highway and heading south.
What kind of vehicles mostly stolen?
I was going right there. I talked at the beginning, so far this year, we've had 20 motor vehicles stolen to date. Out of those 20, 10 of them are recreational vehicles: ATVs, motorcycles, a golf cart, and watercraft. So half of that 20 weren't even cars, or what the average person would consider a car. The majority of the vehicles that we're seeing stolen are the Ford trucks, the F-250s, the Those are big out here, because a lot of people are hauling their horses or some type of trailer, so they're using these heavy-duty or super-duty vehicles, and that's what these people are stealing. Yes, sir?
You said that calls into that category of stolen motor vehicles?
A motor vehicle, anything operates with a motor. In the group of 20? No, I'm going to explain to you, in the group of 20, 10 of them were recreational vehicles, whether it's a watercraft, an ATV, a golf cart, or a motorcycle. 10 of them were actual cars, what we would consider a car. This is a comparison throughout Broward County. We have crime analysts, we have two of them, that compile this information for us. They speak with the other analysts throughout Broward County. Unfortunately, they don't necessarily communicate on a daily basis with analysts from Dade County or Palm Beach County, but in talking with them, we're seeing this trend throughout South Florida, throughout Broward, Dade, and West Palm Beach. So you see in Davie, we've had a 9 percent increase. That 9 percent is 14 more vehicles year-to-date in Davie. You can see the 233 percent, because we go from six vehicles last year year-to-date to 20. You can see in Fort Lauderdale, there are 578 vehicles have been stolen year-to-date in Fort Lauderdale. So it's not just a problem here in Southwest Ranches or in Davie, but it's happening throughout South Florida.
How many of those do you recover? Excuse me, next question.
I don't have the number that we recover. This is a call for service, this is the number of calls for service our police officers handle here in Southwest Ranches on a monthly basis. You can see it's broken down by month. We've handled just over 3,000 calls for service to date this year in Southwest Ranches.
You should characterize those calls.
I sure will. They like doing charts. Our analysts are great at charts. One of the direction that we receive from Mr. Burns and from your council is that traffic's a big issue out here, that people are speeding through. So you can see that the majority of our calls for service are traffic stops. 1,041 traffic stops to date. The next biggest thing is police service calls, where you call, you know, you need help with something, or, and then it goes down. Audible alarms are the next biggest one, but that's the breakdown. The top 10 are on there. So traffic stops are 1,041. Police service calls are extra watches. If you go on vacation and you do the extra watch, should we come out? We had 692 of them, 300, over 300 alarms. We had 174 accidents without injury. 133 information calls. Another big problem out here is the loose animals. We had 100 of them. And then assisting other agencies, suspicious vehicles, disturbances such as noise complaints, and suspicious incidents. Those are the top 10. Any questions so far?
Yeah.
Yes, sir?
What did you find in that pot house?
Which one? A whole bunch of pot. A whole bunch of pot. A whole bunch of pot. They did.
Did you find Hillary button in that pot?
You all steer away from that one.
That one, was it an occupied house or a user house?
Unfortunately, it was a sheriff's office operation, so I don't have the details on their investigation. The sheriff's office.
Oh, you mean that investigating?
Yes, sir.
I thought it was in your jurisdiction.
It is, but unfortunately, or fortunately, I don't know which way you want to put it, the sheriff's office has jurisdiction throughout the county. So they initiated the investigation, they completed it, they conducted a search warrant, and then they let us know that they're in...
Will we eventually get a report?
I'm sure if we ask, we could probably obtain something. Yes, sir?
Yeah, we have apparently become a target of these group homes that do heroin, and have substance abuse rehab. Are you starting to see a lot of calls for that sort of?
Can I finish this and then come to that? Give me two minutes, and I will. I got some data on that for you. Any other questions about the crime that I've talked about? And Mr. Burns had asked to briefly go over some of the things that we're seeing that are going on nationwide. One of the biggest concerns that we have are the attacks on law enforcement. We take that very seriously. We've given direction to our officers that you will not respond to a call alone, period. We send two cops to every call, and that's affected us, as anybody can imagine. So if you call the police and it takes a little bit longer, it's not a high-priority call, that's why. So we're sending two cops to every single call for service. You can see, this is line-of-duty deaths in police year-to-date. There's an 83 percent increase in the number of cops that have been shot and killed this year. And this is a breakdown of how they've died to this point.
Does that include the ones in Dallas and Boca?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. This is year-to-date. This is of the end of July. That includes all the deaths. So 33 cops have died by gunfire so far this year. Any questions? I think that's the end of my PowerPoint, and I'll address the group home. As I understand it, we have two group homes. We have the Alpha House and the Omega House. What we've seen is that, yes, we do go out there for a number of calls for service. I can tell you for the Alpha Group Home, which is for boys. We've had 33 calls for service for just the boys' group home.
Year-to-date?
Year-to-date. Out of those...
Because we've got another one that's coming in now, they're just setting up.
I've heard that, yes.
The detox sober home.
Okay. My understanding of the Alpha and the Omega House, they are not sober homes. These are for kids that have, for some reason, have been removed from their family and they're in state custody. So out of those 33 calls for service, just at the Alpha House, there was one crime. It was a simple battery. The majority of the calls that we respond to for those homes are mental health issues or the kids running away. They're not secure homes. They can come and go as they please. They do have a curfew, and the direction that they receive at the homes is that if they don't return by a certain hour, they are obligated by the state to report them as missing. So we go out, we take a report, then later that night, or the next day when these children return, then we go back and we take them out of the system. We do another report, or we supplement the initial report, saying that they've been taken out of the system, that they returned. For the Alpha, or the Omega House, for the girls, we had 17 calls for service year-to-date. Again, one crime. Both houses had one simple battery each, and again, what we're seeing is that the majority of the calls for service are mental health issues or the kids not returning, running away, and then returning at a later time. So it's difficult for me to expound on the sober houses, because they're not here. Now, we have these homes in Davie, and we experience more crimes. What they do, or what we've seen in Davie is that the kids will go out and they commit vehicle burglaries, and then they return to the home. We're not getting that here, that's not what I'm seeing. By no means do I want to sugarcoat it. It's a drain on services. I mean, these are calls for service that we could be doing something else, but they're not serious. And, you know, they're not, for the most part, these are just troubled kids that have been removed from their families, not because they wanted to, but because the state deemed it necessary that they couldn't be with their parents anymore. Any other questions? Gentlemen?
Counsel, any questions?
Yeah, we appreciate the, excuse me, the time, a lot of good information, and again, behalf of the town of Southwest Ranches, we appreciate this relationship and the outstanding job you're doing on our behalf, and it's always a pleasure to see you.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead, Steve.
Just one comment. I know you had an officer that was severely injured in the line of duty.
Yes.
Not assigned to our town, but it's all, it's all one community, so we certainly wish her the very best. How's she doing? And we just hope that she...
I don't mean to correct you, sir, but really, she is. I mean, she's a supervisor, so it's not uncommon for her to supervise some of the Southwest Ranches officers when she works the nights.
Okay, alright.
In fact, the night that she was injured, she was our West Side Supervisor, so in fact, Southwest Ranches officers fell under her control. She's doing better. She's been released from the hospital, but she's in a rehabilitation facility. She's going to have a long road ahead of her. I think physically, she's okay. She's banged up, but she had a severe concussion, so it's going to be a long road for her to come back. And we're all praying for her. We appreciate the support that we've gotten. We've gotten a ton of support throughout the community, and it's a tragedy. We're grateful that she's alive, to be quite honest with you, because it could have been much...
I know that we wish her the very best.
Thank you very much.
Thoughts and prayers are with her and her family. Thank you again, Dale. And thank you, Steve. Okay, that concludes item number three. Item number four, public comment for the rules of public comment. Richard?
Yeah, we have three speakers tonight, Mr. Mayor, and the first one is Leah Kraus.
Don't start until I get this microphone situated. That's okay, I'm vertically challenged, you're not. Thank you so much. My name is Leah Kraus, and I am proud to be running as your next Circuit Court Judge in Group Nine. I love what I do. I'm looking to let you know a little bit about myself. My election is on August 30th, or early voting, which is the 20th to the 28th. I have been practicing law for 16 years. I was hoping someone would say, "She doesn't look old enough." We'll let that pass. I have done over 50 jury trials and over 1,000 hearings from Key West all the way to the Panhandle. I began my career in public service. I am a former prosecutor, I'm the only former prosecutor in my race. I served for three years. It was an honor. I tried all kinds of cases. I was a lead in the felony trial unit. I handled very severe cases, all the way up to crimes punishable by life in prison. And I handled heavy caseloads in excess of 300 at a time, which uniquely prepares me to handle the demanding workload of our Circuit Court Judges. I left the State Attorney's Office to work in private civil practice before opening my own law firm 13 years ago. Over the years, I've been appointed by judges in family court to serve as a guardian ad litem to advocate for children. I am also a Florida Supreme Court certified family mediator. All of that is a privilege and an honor. I have a strong commitment to service, and I've been a leader in many organizations. I had the thankless job of being the president of my condominium association. It was a very interesting job. I've also served on many boards. My literature, which I have provided in the back, as well as my website detail all of my board positions, my community involvement, and my volunteerism. I just want to touch upon one thing. The past four years, I've been a big sister in a big sister, little sister program, and she has changed my life. She was recently adopted, and I'm proud of my work with that program, and she fondly calls me her fairy godmother, which is probably my favorite title. I share this with you so that you understand a little bit more about who I am and the type of person that will be your next Circuit Court Judge, to paint a more three-dimensional picture, in addition to my experience. My temperament sets me apart. Quite literally, unless I'm watching a University of Michigan football game, this is how I speak to everyone everywhere, which is why I am the only one in my race that has been endorsed by the Sun Sentinel, and I'm very proud of that endorsement amongst over 200 others. The Sun Sentinel said, and I quote, "We endorse Leah Kraus, a former Broward County prosecutor, because she has the skills, the demeanor, and the temperament to be a good Circuit Court Judge." I've also been endorsed by the PBA, the firefighters, Hispanic Vote, many others. In the next two to four years, we're losing 11 Circuit Court Judges, and these vacancies are going to come in criminal, civil, probate, and family. We need a well-rounded candidate. I am your well-rounded candidate. I am the only one in my race that has done a depth of both criminal and civil practice. I am asking for your support and your votes. On August 30th, please vote for me and share this information. Leah Kraus, Circuit Court Judge, candidate, Group Nine.
Great to see you, Leah, and good luck to you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is David Kozinski.
Good evening, Counsel. I'd just speak to you about the recent guardrails we put up on Sterling Road. I've spoken to some of the residents recently in the area, and they said, "Since the guardrails have gone up, the speeding has increased." And when one neighbor said to me, when she went to the Davie Police, when asking, "What speed rate were they ticketing people?", he was saying 45 miles an hour. So anybody going from 25 to 45, they're getting a bye. And there's been an increase, according to her, having to walk across Sterling Road with the speeding cars, she's in fear of her life now because of the speeding. That's all. Just maybe we can get the Davie Police to be a little more enforcing of those traffic laws.
Our next speaker is Dee Schroder.
Dee Schroder, 5501 through a red lane. Sorry for this, I got a low call here. I wish I was coming to you with something like that, but I'm going to keep pounding at this election. I'm hoping that I will get more support soon, more endorsements, because I am going to be your ticket. I've been here for all of yous for 30 years, since before conception. I have fought for the town, I have fought for the individuals, and I will always fight for this town. This is our legacy to our kids. This is something that we want to keep as simple and as quiet and as precious as we possibly can. It would be nice if we could have stayed unincorporated. No one bothered us, they left us alone, but they don't want to leave us alone. We are the Central Park, and everybody wants to take a bite out of us, and we've got to stop that. We've got to keep everybody at bay. So again, I urge you to think about this. I'm running for District Four, and I hope to get all of your support. Thank you.
Thanks, Dee.
Okay, that concludes public comment. Item number five, board reports. Any board members here wish to make any comments? See none? That concludes item number five. Item number six, council member comments. Gary?
Yeah, I'll go first. I'll be brief, as usual. Just want to mention that out west, the charter school is progressing, I don't want to use the word nicely, but it's in full throttle. I mean, it's, they're really going, construction crews are just around the clock. They're probably working 24/7, you know, against the clock to open that up. And Andy and the administration and the Davie Police Force are probably going to be pretty active here with traffic control and crowd control coming up. And I just want to mention also that I noticed today that they completed the, most of the missing guardrails on 195th, and I don't want to take away any thunder from Steve or anything, but it looks a lot, a lot safer and a lot better, you know, and they're in the cleanup phase of that. So I just wanted to mention that to the residents, and that's basically about it.
Thanks, Gary. Freddie?
None.
Steve?
Well, most of my report has been reported, but that's good. That's good. I appreciate that. It's always, right. The only thing that I'll add on to that is, we are pulling together a meeting of the residents. It's open to the town, but we're really going to focus on the residents out on 185th, 186th, 188th, 190th regarding that sober home. We're still pulling some information together on that, but we're setting up, I believe, we've got the date, September 8th, is it? Yep, yep. September 8th, so we'll be sending out more information on that, and certainly, the council's welcome, but this was just something that's a big issue out in that area, so we'll...
Is that permitted yet? Do they have their certification?
Yeah, pretty much ready to go, yeah.
Is it?
Yeah. So I just wanted to announce that if we can set aside that date on your calendars, September 8th, and we'll have more information. Thanks.
Thank you, Steve.
What time is that? Seven?
Seven o'clock.
Doug?
I'm good.
And I'm good, too. All right. Item number seven, legal comments. Richard?
Happy to be here. No comments tonight. Thank you.
We're happy to have you, Richard. Always a pleasure to see you. Item number eight, administration comments. Andy?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just very briefly, one very quick announcement. Just want to remind you all and invite the public, we have our budget workshop scheduled for council chambers on August 23rd. That's a Tuesday night at 7:00 PM. We'll be right in here, and our goal is to have, as those of you who are watching the PowerPoint from Davie Police earlier, our goal is to have the new projection system in place, so that people will be able to follow along with that presentation, and we'll go from there. That's really all I have tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Andy. All right, that concludes administration comments. Item number nine, resolution for the record, please. Russell?
This is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving an agreement in the amount of $151,453.10 with Weekly Asphalt Paving, Inc., to complete the Southwest 190th Extension Project, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to enter into an agreement and providing an effective date.
Thank you, Russell. Andy?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. This is grant-funded through FDOT, the Florida Department of Transportation. This is to pave or complete the section of roadway that's unpaved currently on 190th over by Country Estates Park into Griffin 345. Also, we will be repaving the existing portion of that road to the north of that, all the way out to Griffin Road, resurfacing that.
Thank you, Andy.
Thank you. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion second to approve. Any members of the public wish to comment on this item? Come on up, David.
David Kozinski, 6411 Holliday Trail. My understanding from speaking with the residents around the area, that there were maybe three roads that are supposed to be closed as a result of this. Is there somebody that can confirm that with me?
Two roads.
Two roads, okay. And my question is just, are they going to be closed contemporaneously with the opening of this?
That's the plan. We don't know.
Wait, we don't want to debate...
David, yeah. Well... I'll answer that when we get...
Yeah, after we get through public comment, we'll make sure that we address that.
Okay. Alright, thanks.
Any other members of the public wish to comment on this item? See, non-public comment is now closed. Steve?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, so there is, this is actually part of a larger plan. This is one piece. It was a very large, critical piece, because it's expensive, and through the state legislature and through the lobbyists, we were able to get this money, you know, allocated to us, yeah. So, but when this road is completed, you know, right now, there's barriers there, and I expect those barriers to stay up. That's for, you know, debate, but I expect, because the completion of this is really to be able to put a gate in there to protect that community there. But when the road opens up, when the road opens up with the gate there, those other two roads, 54th and 57th, which are the two roads that connect, two of three roads, right now, there's three roads that connect 190th to 188th. It's 54th, 57th, and 63rd. 63rd is going to remain open, but 54th and 57th will be closed, so that it will limit the traffic to and from that community.
Is, I have a question. Is this the time to kind of have a discussion about that at all, or no?
Sure.
I, I, I don't think it is, but I mean, we could.
Yeah, I'd prefer, I mean, whatever you guys want to do, obviously.
I'm flexible, but...
But, yeah, I mean, leave it up to you guys. Yeah, this is just to initiate it, and then with regards to how it needs to be addressed.
It's a matter, it's a difference of opinions related to it.
Oh, yeah, well, listen, we're familiar. I hear you.
But I will, I didn't know if I should throw out the other half of that opinion.
Andy, comment?
Yeah, Mayor, if I may weigh in, and obviously, this is very much a policy decision and a council decision, but the one thing I just do want to point out for the record, we do anticipate a public safety grant request coming from the 345 folks, and I don't believe that they're here, or there's certainly contingent from Country Estates, to maybe discuss and weigh in on their thoughts on some of those decisions and how it impacts them. So, I mean, that's something that we certainly schedule for council at your convenience, and when you request, I would just want to make sure that members of the public that would be impacted would be here to share their thoughts.
I'm in full agreement of that, and I think, I'm sure Steve would be in full agreement of that, so I guess, I don't know that we should do it on the night of the grant proposal, because that would be a whole lot of stuff to address for a period of, that would take some time. But I'm full in agreement of having the resident that it's going to affect be present. The dilemma we have is, we have two neighborhoods that it's going to affect, 345 and 188. Those are the only two neighborhoods really affected here. So both sides of that coin need to be present. So I don't know if you want to set a special meeting related to that neighborhood, related to that event, related to that road and the closures, and where things should go, as a special meeting discussion. Just an idea, my thoughts.
Thank you, Doug. What is required to be...
closures, and where things should go as a special meeting discussion. Just an idea, my thoughts.
Thank you, Doug. When is required to be completed? When is this grant mandated? Like, December 31st, Andy, I think it was?
Yeah, yes, Mayor.
If I remember correctly, when I read it?
The paving of the roadway needs to be completed by the end of the calendar year. Yes, sir.
Yeah, if I could weigh in, Mayor. Just my two cents worth, gentlemen. I think probably the time for that conversation to start up here, start, would be when construction starts, just as a, to pick a point in time.
I'm good with that.
You know, because it's going to probably be a 30, 30 to 60-day project.
Right.
And that's the time we can start talking about it. And the what-ifs and all the citizens, excuse me, can weigh in who are affected by it. Just a point in time I'm picking.
Listen, that sounds perfectly sensible to me, but I would tell you, that'll probably roll into two or three meetings of the process. So, we'd probably want to make sure they're notified to be at those meetings, because it'll probably come up as it progresses.
Absolutely. I think once they see construction going on out there, they'll start inquiring, I'm sure. But I suspect, when, this is proof tonight, what are we looking at timeframe-wise? This, the project to get started, Andy?
You know what, Mayor, as far as to get started?
You just approved it tonight as well.
Certainly, yeah. Yeah, they're ready to roll.
Okay.
FDOT has reviewed the contract. They've already approved it. They're ready to go.
Okay. So, I don't want to do it now, because I want to get the feedback from everybody out in the two areas. So, I definitely don't want to do it now. Two thoughts, and I'm not sure how much time, and I know that there's a lot of things upcoming that are important to the town that's going to take some time, obviously, specifically the budget. Well, the question to you all is, do you want to have a special meeting, or do you think we can accomplish it at one of the lighter agendas, you know, coming up in the near future, within probably 60 days is what they anticipate the project to be completed?
Just my, my opinion is, it's always better to do it on a council night if we have a light agenda on it, because people are already inclined to coming out.
Okay. Here's what I'm, here's what I'm inclined to, is that okay with you, Gary?
Yeah, I fully agree.
Here's what I'm inclined to say, Andy. Just, you know, the timeframe, you know what the desires of this council. Obviously, sometime in the near future, not-so-distant future, on one of the light agenda nights, let's get this item on there. And I suspect probably the next couple of meetings, we'll make sure that we get this input and debate started. Okay? Everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve. Any additional questions, comments, or concerns, counsel? Seeing none, call, roll, please, Russell?
Councilmember Jablonski?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitz Kelly?
Yes.
Councilmember Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes, item number 10. For the record, please, Russell?
A resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving a purchase order with Erdman Anthony for construction, engineering, inspection services for the Southwest 190th Avenue Extension roadway improvements, authorizing the town administrator to execute the purchase order and providing an effective date.
Thank you, Russell. Andy?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. This is actually a companion item to the last, to the last resolution that the council approved. One of our grant requirements requires us to hire a consulting firm to oversee this project. This is a firm we've worked with in the past. We have a contract with. And the grant funding allows us to pay them, so this is not a town expense. This will also be paid out of our FDOT grant. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Andy. Counsel?
Motion to approve.
Motion to second approve. Any members of the public wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, public comment is now closed. Any additional questions, comments, or concerns, counsel? Seeing none, Russell, will you call the question, please?
Councilmember Jablonski?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitz Kelly?
Yes.
Councilmember Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes. And just for the record, EPTOT is funding 190, at least what I'm reading from. And just to let everybody know, it's funding almost 298,603, and town's expenses is $12,995, just for the record, for a total of $211,598. Okay, that completes item number 10. Item number 11, Russell?
Sorry, Mayor. Resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to execute the First Amendment to the settlement agreement with Broward County regarding the Resource Recovery Board to allow for the delay in the sale of the parcel of land known as Alpha 250 and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, Russell. Andy?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. As you all, as you all recall, the Resource Recovery Board assets, the inter-local agreement that we had participated in with Broward County expired. And coming out of that, we were one of, I believe, 19 municipalities that entered into litigation against Broward County. We prevailed. There was, well, actually, settlement reached, I'll say. The town received the proceeds from the Resource Recovery Board that we had coming to us. This is, this one parcel is the one last asset of the Resource Recovery Board. The requirements of the original agreement that we entered into was that a parcel be sold and that the proceeds be split up among the member municipalities. One of the county commissioners, Beam Fur, wants to take a look at this and maybe bring a group together to expand and increase the level of recycling in the county. This facility may or may not be an appropriate place to do that. And what they're asking at this time is that we give them a year to look at that, conduct that study, not bring that parcel to market now. Just take a look at it, see if the municipalities may be better served by another purpose. That's what we're looking for. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Andy. Appreciate the explanation, counsel.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to second approve. Any members of the council, any members of the public wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, public comment is now closed. Again, we have a motion to second approve. Any other additional questions, comments, concerns, counsel? Seeing none, Russell, call the question, please.
Councilmember Jablonski?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitz Kelly?
Yes.
Councilmember Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes, item number 12, the approval of the minutes for the July 14, 2016 regular council meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Freddie. Motion to second to approve. And I know you guys read this, because you've corrected us in the past. Any members of the public have any corrections or concerns? Seeing none, public comment is now closed. Again, we have a motion in a second to approve the minutes of the July 14, 2016 regular council meeting. Russell, call the question, please.
Councilmember Jablonski?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitz Kelly?
Yes.
Councilmember Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes, that concludes our agenda.
Motion to adjourn.
We've got a motion adjourned. I'm sure that it is unanimous. Good seeing everybody. Always a pleasure. And thank you again, public, for being here. Have a nice evening.